All right.
Yeah.
That's what I have. All right. It is now time for our work study session for July 18th, 2022. We'll call please.
Mayor He.
President.
Mr. Hope.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
President.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
President.
Mr. Castleberry.
President.
Mr. Gomes.
At this time, I will now turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. First item for discussion tonight is a proposed consulting arrangement with Smith Group. As you know, they've been working on the riverfront project, which we were recently awarded an enhancement grant from the state of $3 million of the public portion of that project. Bob Doyle is appearing by Zoom tonight. He has still in the testing positive stage with his COVID, so on this caution, he's appearing by way of Zoom. So I'm going to turn it over to him. Let him explain kind of what he has been doing and what he would envision doing for the city going forward. We put a draft of his consulting agreement in your packets where you look at in advance of meetings. They have seen that, but you can go ahead if you can hear us.
Yes, very good. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to attend remotely. I appreciate your patience and look forward to meeting you all face to face. As Greg noted, we've been working with local partnership over the last year to develop a vision plan for the waterfront in downtown Adrian. And the purpose of that exercise was simply to generate some enthusiasm amongst funding agencies and legislators and other decision makers that this was a project that warranted support. And so it's been successful in that regard, as Greg noted. To start out tonight, I'd like to give you a quick run through of some of the work that we do. You may or may not know of us. Our firm is about 1,300 people across the country. The firm's roots are in Ann Arbor, Michigan and Detroit, Michigan. And we were known for decades as Johnson, Johnson Roy or JJR, Planning Landscape Architecture and Engineering Consulting Practice. We merged in the 1970s with a group of architects, the Tensham Girls out of Detroit, and now operate as Smith Group. So our primary offices are in Detroit and Ann Arbor, but we have 12 other offices across the country. Let me share my screen very quickly. Oops, I don't know if I can here.
She's taking care of it.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay. Apologize, but it seems to have locked up. So let me back up. This is a new one on me. Well. I do apologize, but it does not seem to be responding. So perhaps if you, as the host, could just take, take charge of the screening. Yeah. Without benefit of some images. Can you all still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. In any case, let's, let's proceed. And I will be happy to show you some of our qualifications at any point, but we are in a kind of people, civil engineers, planners, landscape architects, environmental scientists. We are working currently on a number of river fronts and water fronts, including Millikan State Park in Detroit. The Detroit River Walk, which is a project that we did the initial design work on and continue to work on extensions of it. We have a project in Toledo on the waterfront, which is a large metropolitan park on the Mauna Kea River, which is currently under construction. We also do a fair amount of community planning and other kinds of community improvement projects, including street design projects, classes, open spaces, parks and recreation facilities.
Lindsey up here. The concept here is really, as I think I mentioned previously, is to separate the riverfront development into segments. There's the river, riverfront project itself, which is envisioned to be public lands on either side of the river. I am opening it up, making it accessible to the public behind the private development, which was the department project fronting on Winter Street. And then the third component of the project is, has been envisioned today, it's a streetscape for Winter Street, which would also be a published project. Two parts to Bob's proposal that is in front of you. One is that design work, well, three parts really, but one is that design work ongoing related to what the riverfront development looks like. Two is, and most importantly, Bob has charted out grant opportunities that could make this project happen for a couple of years. And part of the proposal would be to engage him to both monitor those opportunities and those deadlines and then write the grant applications for those particular programs as those come due. And then the third part would be available to look into other design opportunities related to downtown. And particularly that relates to Jerry, as long as we're waiting for Bob to come back. If you want to talk a little bit about our conversation and the vision for your space type there, Jerry.
Yeah, sure. So many of you may know that the Crosswell has recently purchased the building at 124 East Front Street. It was commonly called the Farm or calling it 123 East Front Street. And as the city is doing work on and developing the Farmer's Market Pavilion, part of the Crosswell's property includes that driveway that's used for accessibility into that parking lot in the market. And I really think it would make sense for us to look at the overall design. We are planning a pavilion that would not compete with the Farmer's Market, but also but support events and things happening in the downtown on the property that we own. So I met with Greg to ask, do you think it would make sense that we could talk about the overall landscaping and the design of those spaces as adjacent to each other to make sure that we are supporting each other in the way we're putting the projects together? So it was a good meeting and Greg suggested that perhaps Bob Doyle would be the way to help support that and really maximize the impact of the investment in the Farmer's Market Pavilion, as well as what our friends and supporters are looking to do with the property that we own.
So now regarding, we, I think I mentioned before or last meeting that we didn't get the T-Mobile grant that we had applied for, but yeah, we do have available funds. You know, and we have certain contractors already in place per our annual bids that can do the bathroom work. So we're planning to proceed with the bathroom work, but we put a hold on the electrical improvements because those could very well be, the electrical improvements are meant to support like bands, food trucks, so they don't need generators out there. And those are space dependent. The bathrooms are going to be where they're going to be and they're going to benefit the whole area by having them out there. But the food, there are the electrical improvements are kind of space dependent. And so we have to put a hold on that until we can get some thinking about placemaking done and kind of have a broader vision of what that space would look like, like Jerry was describing, so that we know where those really want to, want to be. Bob's still not back. I will just kind of proceed with, what I would like to see happen here. You know, John needs to look at this agreement still. It's just in draft form. But the opportunity here is that we've, we've received, the governor just signed the budget bill. So we're, we're going to be receiving those $3 million associated with that river project. My hope would be that it's going to be similar to the Tower project and the design cost will be eligible for the use of those funds. So assuming that we, that we find that to be true as we get the guidance from the state as it relates to that enhancement grant, that I would like to use some of those funds to have him proceed with his design work and his grant work in support of that river project. Bob's the obvious choice because he's already deep into the private group. I had hoped he would have a bit for him, a dog and bunny show for you tonight. He was planning to be here in person, but he tested positive again. He had COVID last week. Still hasn't positive for that. I'm happy to answer any questions I can about the proposal of to back a project that's path forward. If there are no questions interested in whether you support your bounce back.
I recently was able to go and walk parts of Millikan State Park and Detroit Riverfront less than two weeks ago for the first time, and it's impressive. If you haven't been there, you wouldn't believe the amount of people using it. We were there from 5:30 to 10 o'clock on Wednesday night in there. Rollerbladers, kids, families, all kinds of wayfaring signs. They did wetlands. You know, they did like a little wetlands walkthrough area where there were a bunch of like 10-year-old boys playing around in there. I didn't know that he was a part of that project or his group was, but it's very well done. Very, very well.
So we're just having some praise for your Millikan Park project there while we were waiting for you to come back. I kind of filled in a little bit while you were gone, but please proceed with anything else you wanted to give us by way of your presentation.
Sure. I apologize. I am actually reasonably adept at technology, but tonight it is failing me. Perhaps it's a little bit of leftover COVID brain. But in any case, we have been working on a number of projects that are similar and relevant to this. And they range from, you know, smaller communities like Sylvania, Ohio. You know, we have a big project under construction in Toledo right now. It's very substantial waterfront redevelopment with public access facilities as well as the work in Detroit. So the way we structured the proposal that you have in front of you is that we would be taking care of key things that need to be done in order to secure more funding and get the project moving towards implementation. And in many cases, almost every project I've ever worked on, including at Milliken, there's always multiple sources of funding that are working to get a project built. I think the phase, the wetland phase that you were referencing earlier, that was five different sources of funding that contributed to that $5 million project. So these key steps that have to be taken include, one, refining the plan for the riverfront with public input. So this initial plan was simply done to try to solicit some support and see if there was the potential for doing a project now that that hurdles, you know, overcome. The next step is to really get out with the public and say, is this how we want to shape our waterfront and our riverfront over the next 10 years? And what do we want to leave our children with as a resource along the river? And so that's one task. A second task is then going in and actually pursuing grants. And the money that the state has allocated that Greg was referencing earlier is a great starting point to allow you to have money to use for a match for other grants that can help get the project moving and limit local expenditure on, on these public improvements. A third area that we outlined in the draft proposal was to just be available to assist in any form that the city needs us for, whether it's working on a piece of property in downtown, assessing its development potential or use as a public space. That, that's up to you. And the way we structure these things with, with, with communities is that we do all the legwork at our own expense. So we will sit down with you and Greg and we'll assess what the project needs are. We'll write a scope of work, determine a schedule, we'll outline what the fees would be for that particular part of the work. And then we would talk about whether that's meeting your needs. What do we need to add? What do we need to take out? And then as each work product or project is authorized, then we start working on it. So the only work that we do is what is directly authorized. So it's, it's in no way, this kind of contract is not in any shape or form an open book for us to, to, to start thinking about, oh, what great things can we do? It's you guys telling us what you need from us and us supporting you with that, you know, extensive background in these kinds of projects that we have. Did I catch everything, Greg?
Okay, thanks very much, Bob. So if the commission's comfortable, I would like to work the job and make sure we've got the contract in order and then bring it back next time. Like Bob says, we're not extending anything to create to a particular project. Any objection to that?
Studying stuff.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Bob.
Great. Thank you for your time and most of all, your patience. And I look forward to meeting you all face to face sometime soon.
Very cool. See you then. So next up for tonight is the further discussion of mobile food vending, which we never discussed yet, but Zach, we've had a number of requests for special event status. As you may recall, when we did our resolution authorizing where mobile food vending or food trucks can be on public property, the only place that we authorized was Farmer's Market with the exception of special events. And the special events we just defined in the resolution debate, we define First Fridays as a special event. Our delicious special event. Food G-Call, we define as a special event. And so now others are coming to us and wanting to be special. Jay, particularly as the Main Street Director now, wanting to be special events. The only distinction between an event, which is a closed street downtown, and a special event is that you have food trucks there. So what occurred to us in discussing it that rather than going about a process of trying to decide whose event is really special, we simply visit the issue of whether or not at this point in our becoming comfortable with food trucks, we're at the point now where we're willing to allow them when streets are closed downtown. There are, there are a set of limiting criteria already in the ordinance in terms of where food trucks can be. They can't be within X number of feet.
100.
100 feet of a brick and mortar restaurant. And so it's not like they're out there competing directly with our brick and mortar restaurants, unless of course they waive that distance requirement, which they can do. You know, I think it makes sense at this point to, to allow them, there's clearly demand for them at events that are downtown events where, as we talked about last time, in the process of developing, sort of weeding out, well, not weeding out criteria, but criteria that will impose the true cost of street closures on those who want to close streets. And that will have the effect, I expect, of causing more events to want to be at the Farmer's Market Pavilion. Plus, when we add restrooms there, that also will make that a more attractive space as opposed to the Mauna Kea Street, which has no common restaurants. But as we're getting there, I mean, I think this would be a logical next step in our adoption of food, that mobile food vending. Jay, is there anything you want to add to what I said there?
Just one thing. We, I surveyed several restaurants after the June 1st Friday, which is really the only one, because of weather, but it was the largest one. We had food trucks at that event and no noticeable impact by any means. And even as the surveys went out, and so those were face to face conversations, then we sent surveys out and several restaurants responded they couldn't even keep up with, with what they had with their staffing and other issues. I know in particular Sauce was at an hour and a half wait during the June 1st Fridays. I know other restaurants were at least an hour wait. So there's, they're not even to keep up to the capacity that's there. And these food trucks, they didn't even harm that during, during the June 1st Fridays.
And just in general, food trucks, you know, studies have shown they don't compete with sit-down restaurants. They do compete maybe with fast food. So maybe instead of stopping at the towels on the taco on your way up town, you've already gotten your food downtown before you left, but it's not the same experience as sit-down. Studies have really shown.
Yeah. And the other observation I saw was when people were going to food trucks, it was a lot of families that were staying and engaging because they were bringing their kids and they were getting something to feed their kids, where they wouldn't have gone into a restaurant potentially. But they were, they were staying downtown instead of meeting you, get a meal someplace else.
Open that up for discussion. What we would like to do is bring a revised resolution back if you're comfortable with it at your next meeting to change the rules as it relates to where food trucks can be on public property to allow them anytime. Approve, there's an approved street closure downtown subject to those location criteria.
I know you and I had talked, but the obstacle of putting more things out there to make a special event, like then you got to have guidance, you got to have some policy, like what constitutes a special event was a bigger nightmare, I know, in the city staff's eyes. And I, I agreed with you when you said that, that just seems like, this just seems like a logical solution because to have that special event status, we have to start really setting some parameters of what is a special event and that enforcing that. And just, it's a lot more, we already get complaints that we have a lot of hoops to jump through for certain things. And I feel like that would just be another time where we're going to have more hoops to jump through. Just so I'm clear, so anytime we, the city staff approves a street closure, they can have food trucks as long as they don't fall within 100 feet of the restaurant.
Yeah, I think since we dove into that, you know, months ago, I think that we're kind of just drafting the original regulations on it to make sure that we're covering our bases. I think that I'm comfortable moving forward with this. I think it just makes sense. So break down the barriers and since the future already closed, I mean, it's, why not?
I think our main concern in that was the downtown response, and if you're comfortable with it.
Buster comments? I'll bring you back to something next. With approval. Next up, we have continuing discussion of our want a sale ordinance. I put a very rough draft of that in your packet. One I worked on based on what I got from Dan Swallow, actually, that he did for the city of the row, which they did adopt, to see what they have in place. Ours is more narrow than theirs. A couple of things I'll point out in there. We define promises in the ordinance as the exterior areas of any piece of land inclusive of the dwelling or rental units thereon. So it's an exterior only inspection. We're not venturing into the interior of residential homes. At this point, there is an option in here to, for private contractors to get registered as a private inspector, so that there will be a list of private inspectors that you can hire or the city inspectors can be hired to do it as well. There should be plenty of people available to do it, scheduling delays. Although, you know, given the volume that we anticipate, I think city staff could handle it without it. Delays of any kind based on the numbers that Kristen had given us. And there is a provision for conditional approvals so that transactions can proceed, you know, not holding up sale as an ultimate. That section, I think, is 10-427. It's a little bit more work still related to a process for draws. The problem when you have security is, you know, if your money's put up to guarantee something, it's not available to do it. So we want to have a process where the draws, so that contractors get paid to complete the items that are necessary. Those are the things I wanted to particularly point out. Yeah, we would, we would envision this being a very simple and easy process, just like any other inspection that you get from the community development department. Typically turn them around the next day. You have requests for inspections, certainly not saying we should be pretty smooth and seamless. I think the ordinance draft that's in front of you envisions a period of three years that a certificate will be good. So if your property's been inspected in that time, or if the property being sold has a valid rental certificate, then it does not need a new inspection. then it does not need a new inspection. Those are a few of the highlights interested to hear if any of you saw anything in there that caused you concern or questions. People if they want to comment later too.
Well, first off, now I want to thank Greg for, for digging into this. And then I think that some of the highlights you made, I think, actually makes it even a smoother process. You know, you know, when you're in regards to our own staff handling of them. Real quick, before I get into what this is all about, John, can you give some, some light, shed some light on some of the communities you represent? Do they have this? How's it go? Was it a, was it a shock for those communities at first? And then I'm sure they, when I talk to the communities, especially in downtown area, they've gotten on board with it. It's changed their cities, you know, from a blight standpoint, but your expertise on dealing with some of these communities will be insightful.
Of the dozens of municipalities I represent, I'd say ninety percent have certificate of occupancy requirements that pertain that are much, some are much broader than this. This is very limited in terms of its scope, limited to the exterior, which is good. I suspect at some point, if you pass this in the future, you may want to look at interiors so they get better looks at furnaces, plumbing, electrical outlets, things of that nature. That's widely done throughout the entire state of Michigan. They have been met with some opposition, of course. But in terms of the communities, the South Gates, the Rouge's, the East Points, things of that nature, they've seen tremendous success on it. It puts pressure, albeit on homeowners to make sure that their premises, either for rental or for their own occupancy, beaten with code. Will also help, I think, the city of Adrian. For instance, this week we have fifteen or twenty pre-trials on nuisance abatement actions just for the exterior of the premises. I spent an hour on the phone today with two or three landlords, so to speak, figuring out time of painting, of scraping, things of that nature. I think this will go a long way to nip that in the bud. I realize it'll cause some problems, but I do not think in any way, shape or form that it will interfere with the sale of residential or commercial properties within the city of Adrian. This is a very, very good step, in my opinion, to try to nip any issues in the bud and to make sure that people are on notice when they want to make money off of an investment or sell a piece of property. And at the very minimum, it's up to code. At a minimum, it's up to code in ordinances and I can't envision any argument against that.
You know, we had a forum here, uh, three or four months ago, you know, and, and, and since then, you know, you all follow real estate that, you know, especially in the city is that there's been an abundance of, of landlords dumping properties. Um, you know, Lad and I met with Greg last week about this and we walked out. We caught Jake in the parking lot and then, and he was just picking his brain. So we, Lad and I told him both how much we appreciated his service and that he's making a lot of headway. But with that being said, he also said that, you know, one of our local landlords, um, who he knows, he went to him and said, you need to sell your properties. Adrian's been a slumlord haven for decades. People come in, they don't invest in the property, they don't have CapEx when it comes to rent and they let their buildings fall apart. Those days are over, I think. Hopefully, if this gets adopted. When we say that we're serious about blight, this is what Lad and I and the mayor and, and a lot of Greg spent almost two years on researching other communities, spending hours upon hours on how do we fix this? It's not an easy fix, but, but I think that, you know, what this, what this ordinance is, it's bare minimum maintenance on your property. And I will say this, not being a politician, but if you can't afford to fix your roof and have a whole new roof, then maybe you should not be able to own a home. That's the way it is, you know? It's not fair to others when, 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 if, if, if I live next to the mayor, which I have before and, and, and she maintains her property and my porch is something and I have, uh, uh, my windows are broken. I have a hole in her, how is that fair to her and her family that she's living next to it? Now, will this fix it? I think that this point of sale, I think it's a very small minute, um, when it comes to property sales. But I think that long term, I think once I'm long gone, um, we can look back on this and say that, you know, you know, that we made the change to change landscape of the city along with all of our other measures. I really appreciate it because Greg has said three things that I really didn't know that there was a lot more lenient when it comes to this process. And then I appreciate it's hard work in this and this is not government putting more red tape on, this is basic maintenance. If you think that not painting your house or, or, or having broken windows is, is government red tape, then I'll be, I'll be happy to support that then.
I have a couple of questions. When someone, when in doing the inspection, you know, like when I buy my home, I hire an inspector to look at it first. Does this inspector, we have them doing the outside view that can a homeowner or potential homeowner buy? It's hot, it's Monday, y'all. I'm struggling today. Can they hire an inspector to do the whole inspection, but they write up the paperwork for the city? Does it, does that make sense what I'm saying?
I, I suppose a home inspector could also be a certified private inspector of the sorts.
So they're not hiring two different inspectors to do the one?
Yes, they'd be different scopes and possibly different parties paying for it. I mean, I would envision in most cases, this is seller's obligation to get this inspection. Your average home inspection, the buyer is paying for that. So they might not want that to be the same person. Yes, there are two masters like that, but it would be theoretically possible.
And then I have one more question. Um, what does it look like for a new homeowner that buys a home that is blighted compared to this?
Well, so what would happen if this ordinance was in place? If you have a home like Commissioner health that needs painting or has broken windows, that sale transaction will not be able to go through until, till there's a certificate of compliance. So that can happen in different ways. The seller could fix those things first before they try to sell it. Compliance will be in place and they'll be able to sell it. They could get a conditional approval subject to doing those things. And then between buyer and seller, we're going to have to work out who's paying for those. And that's the beauty of this sort of ordinance because you're addressing these issues at the time that money is about to change. Buyer's coming, buyer's got financing, buyer has money available to do certain things, buyer has no payment. Seller is getting cashed out of the property, seller has money available from that transaction. They can work it out themselves how that gets paid for. At the end of the day, the transaction only can go through when a certificate, a full certificate of compliance is in place. So if they agree to a conditional certificate and buyer takes on those obligations, that can happen. There'll be security set aside to make sure those things happen in form of an escrow, like I said. I want to work some more on those escrow provisions so that we're sure that we have the ability to take draws on them. It's not sitting there until I'm, I'm, so I'm working. That's, that's how I would see it.
And so if we didn't have this and someone bought a home that hit light on the outside, what happens to that house?
Yeah, well, unless code enforcement goes out there and writes it up. And that, that is something we hear from time to time, well, why don't you just write up all these houses that are in this condition? We could do that. The problem is that, you know, you may well have owners of limited means right now who cannot afford to do that work. We do still want to have our revolving loan program in place and we're working on that. And that, that is a separate matter that can help address that issue. But if you were to go to a, a person on fixed income who owns a home and hasn't been able to afford it and write them up right now, what's going to happen is they essentially will have to, unless they can refinance, which depending on how bad the blight is, they may not be able to. They will have to sell the home. They will be making the decision for them to sell the home. Whereas what we're seeing with respect to the point of sale ordinance is we're waiting until you're ready to sell that home. But when you're ready to sell that home, you, th- these things have to be addressed. Money's on the table, take, take some of that, put it aside to address the blight issues.
It's like my sick over morning, the same thing like in the health department aspect of it is that, you know, the former owner sold the business to me. Um, I had to get a new owner inspection and, and so they hit, they hit him at that time because that's the time of sale right now. So, so you gotta, in order for me to get that license, he had to fix three or four significant things. And me as a buyer, I'm like, thank God, I had to fix it, you know? You know, but, but, but like Greg said is that, you know, Glenn or Jake could drive around right now and just start writing houses up. And now you got to fix it, right? We're not, we're not going to dip people, we're not going to harass people now. This is just at the sale because that's when money changes hands. So, um, it's, it's, it's really a very, very basic ordinance. I think, you know, you know, you did a really good job of just pretty much just if you drive by and you don't see any major defects, keep driving. You know, and I think, uh, former Commissioner Paul Haber, you know, a community member went around, there's like six hundred blighted exterior homes in the city, um, um, at that time. Now, and I know that Jake has been making his rounds and, 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 you know, fixing a lot of that up. But, but there's still six hundred homes of the five hundred, of the five thousand you have that are blighted from the outside. I think we all know, you know, where they are per se. So, um, again, this is not red tape. I think this is just being responsible. Um, and, and it's, it's been a two-year process. We're not just throwing it on there, um, and, you know, and see if it sticks.
If I might, one more thing, sorry to interrupt. We are staying in court and I invite any of you to spend a day in court with me and hear the excuses as to why the interior next year can't be fixed. I'm selling it on land contract. The, we have places where literally there are no utilities in homes and people are living, living in there. But what else we're seeing is that there are a large number of out of state people buying homes within the city of Adrian who don't show up to court. Then the only thing we can do is tap on a fine of a hundred fifty dollars with an order that they remedy the nuisance within thirty days. If they don't, it's on our tax payers. We are then seeking authority from you to file a separate lawsuit to compel, which costs a lot. And I'm telling you, the exterior is an extremely, extremely limited point of sale ordinance. Usually relates to everything, to the foundation, to the plumbing, to the water, to the electricity, to the outlets in the house, the attic, interior smoke alarms, things of that nature. This is extremely limited ordinance, which I think will help tremendously.
So a couple of things. Greg, when you first started here, I think you and I had a conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, but that you wanted to go through our ordinances and codes and make sure that they were essentially all matching, friendly, understandable. Have we thought about doing that before we throw this on the books?
Well, while we, there's only two ordinances that we have a spec for under this proposed ordinance. One is pro, international property maintenance. Very, you know, as the name would apply, it's the same, not only all around this country, but several countries. So that's a standard, simple code that everybody uses. On their property maintenance. The only other thing we expect for under this proposed ordinance is our, would be zoning violations. Those are the things that John sees all the time. You know, parking in the front yard or, you know, outdoor storage, ping pong, ping pongy property maintenance go. But there's a few related like property upkeep things that can be zoning ordinance violations. Zoning ordinance does need work, don't get me wrong. Zoning ordinance needs to be completely re-riffed. We now have our new cap rates plan in place. So the next step is to tackle that. It's a big job. Jeremy has been working on getting us RRC certified at least to the essentials level. Very close. When we do that, we'll get, RRC will have twenty thousand dollars for us to use to hire a consultant or help us update. Both implement the things that are indicated by the, by the comprehensive plan. And you know, Commissioner Roberts, that, you know, one of those things we, we sort of tried to implement was elimination of warehousing district. And, you know, it leads to this, that, the other thing, there are uses that are only allowed in that district that now we have to find another license. So there's lots to do in terms of still, in terms of getting the zoning ordinance, but not really things that are going to pinch on this, things that inspector would be looking for under this one.
Is this a good time for us to be doing this? High inflation, lack of contractors? If I tried to get someone to put in a fence in my backyard, how long would it take me to do that? Would I be able to follow within our guidelines if I wanted to sell our house? I know I talked to the fencing guy who's doing it at Adrian High School track and he's like one man show and he can't get anyone to help him. So to me, that's an issue. That, that's an issue that we don't have control over. But if we put that burden on our residents, what are we going to do for them? And, and Mr. Bluey, I imagine you hear this because I have sat in a couple of some meetings, you know, twelve one down here on Broad Street, you know, he hired a couple of different painting contractors that took his money and ran or didn't do the right work.
We usually grant them extensions of at least thirty days. Earlier this year, we've granted at least six or seven extensions because of weather. We hear a lot of disappointing stories. We grant them extensions when asked for. The courts have been very, very good with us. But also by getting the extension and keeping something pending before the court and being more aggressive than we have been, the work gets done. They find a way to get it.
And also if this gets adopted, it won't go into effect if it does for six months, right?
Yeah, we, I did point that out, but we've written this so that the effective date would be a hundred and fifty days. Prepare for it. You're right that, uh, you know, right now hiring contractors is diff, very difficult. You know, I, I have a rental house in the city and I had some electrical repairs that I needed to do for my specific compliance. It took me, you know, month and a half to get an electrician out there to do that. But, you know, the department, not just because I'm the director, but because that's what they do, gave me extensions as long as I showed them that I was working on getting those, getting that work scheduled. And that would be the same here. As long as you're working on getting the work scheduled.
And we're talking both residential and commercial, right?
Uh, this is written for residential?
I can notice that at the top.
I think that's in the definition of premises. Well, it doesn't need to be. It could be residential and commercial and that's something that I'd be interested in your thoughts on. Commercial can be more. Yeah, I mean, commercial can be so many different kinds of things, right? It's no, nobody's living there, nobody's living next door to it necessarily, though it might be. Now, and, and the decision to invest in blighted commercial property might be a much longer term project. I, I'm just looking at them knowing it's downtown, you know, we're the owner of a couple of them. I, I would hate to have to bring those up to code within six months after our acquisition of them. I think that would chill many commercial realis, commercial industrial real estate. But residential is a known quantity. Usually simple fixes, particularly because we're dealing with the exterior, painting roofs, point repairs. But I'm, I'm open to your thoughts on other types of property.
Over the last couple of years, as we've talked about where we want to go on this, it's always been residential. We've not talked about commercial. I don't want to make a knee jerk reaction here and how to include commercial. Just stay focused on residential.
And I still think it's a very, very small number and, and somebody asked, well, why are you doing it? Why, why are we doing it? We're doing it because we still have, according to my cut, four percent of properties made here are blighted. And, and, and then from the exterior. So that's why we're doing it, you know, and, and if we can get a couple hundred expectation, except the three year, I, the three year CO, I didn't even know that, that, that's great. So you have three year CO, um, the city's always willing to work with, even myself, like, because Leslie Love is on, she's on me. I had a, I, you know, I had a contract signed for a contractor and, you know, and, and deposit down. So I sent that to her and she was good. She was all right. Just let me know, you know, I'll follow back up, you know, in the middle of August. So, um, because contractors, you know, it's tough now, but. So, um, because contractors, you know, it's tough now, but I think with the six month window, it gives people an opportunity if, if, if they do or they're thinking about selling in the spring, then, then they can get their properties leased from the exterior of the code. So um, I don't see it as a, it's, it's a, it's just basic, basic maintenance. I mean, it's.
But the six hundred blighted properties could be six hundred blighted properties in five years from now if they don't come up for sale, correct?
Correct.
They won't follow in this. So. This is the, I worry about those people who can't afford this. And if we have the revolving fund in established, I wouldn't be as concerned, but.
I think another component that's important also, I think, if there's a buyer involved, there's, there's money involved. And once you have a buyer and a seller and we have problems in hand, there's a such a variety of different ways we can go. It's everything we've done in the past when we purchased projects and prod- products that are properties that we thought were questionable and are, are people that came to inspect it found this, this, and this. We go to the seller and say, this is what our problem is. The bid is twelve hundred dollars for this, eight hundred dollars for this, and where are we gonna go with that two thousand dollars? Seller will say, I don't have the two thousand dollars, but have to work something out. And I think that's an important part of, of what there is. Once we have money involved, the buyer and the seller has the opportunity to be able to negotiate and work things out, I think. Maybe I'm way off. No, I think you're talking about the true price, you know, the true value of that property, right? If, if there are certain items of deferred maintenance, those should not deny, right? So a buyer should be getting that property with those items taken care of or the price should reflect. That's all that the buyer can take care of. Now, that's what we talk about, money being on the table at this point. Money, right, as it relates to the buyer and seller at this point, that's the beauty of point of sale. That's the time to, to get it right. And the thoughts on the point of sale ordinance? I don't, I'm not gonna promise that we'll have this back next time. I want to give it more thought, but we'll keep working on it. Get back to you for action. Soon you'll hear some more opinions about it before that. Maybe in about ten minutes. Also, last scheduled item tonight, uh, in order for Jeremiah and it's, I, there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's our pickleball update. Jeremiah, can you tell us where we're at on the pickleball course?
Uh, you and everybody, obviously, we last few months, pre-request, we've explored a number of locations. Kept you updated regardless of some barriers, some of the things we ran into with this project. One of the goals was obviously to inform you, but also put it out there so the public had an opportunity to express their support, concern. And after our last pre-meeting two weeks ago, we talked about West Park. One, uh, for West Park, that the location, the price skyrocketed, I mean, having cleared the whole area. Two, um, we heard a lot from our citizens, which is a good thing, right? Whether good or bad. We heard from our citizens and while there were some that weren't in support, neighbors that weren't in support, there seemed to be, there were a large number that were against it, right? And what I would tell them in conversations was that the meeting two weeks ago was simply a presentation, just offering options to, to the commission, but also to the community. And um, I would say it was a resounding no. And personally, I, I agree with them. Um, we have to choose a site. My personal professional opinion is that we go back out to Heritage that we talked about about a month ago, month and a half ago. Um, one, we just repaved um, the entire park. It's fantastic. Two, we have the space. It doesn't interrupt anything. Why would we create spaces? Don't have any trees or any of that things that would, you know, disrupt us. For example, West Park, having to tear down a lot of those big trees would be part of the scope of the work. Um, so at this point, um, again, we looked at the pros and cons of Riverside. Heard from quite a few times why that, that area doesn't work. Um, you've heard from me in regards to Heritage Park. And you've also heard from me in regards to West Park. Um, and again, there was a resounding um, no from residents down here. And I fully support that. And I'm glad they reached out to me and to some of you as well. So at this point, um, I think we have to move forward with this project at the Heritage Park site. Um, someone that's here, um, like to have been just kind of chime in a quick is Mr. Greg Dumars. But huge advocate and supporter of this project and the sport and it's been instrumental over the last six months since I've been on the job, talking about the project, the pros and cons, that picture. So Greg, if you want to jump in.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Uh, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. It's, uh, I think it's good to be back here. Uh, I've talked to all of you about pickleball, at least several times personally. I've sent you some emails. I'm not gonna go and preach about how great pickleball is. It's the fastest running sport in the country. Soon as Jeremiah got hired, I've known Jeremiah not real well, but he played pickleball thirty years ago in my backyard with my daughters. So, uh, when I heard he got the job, I went down there, talked to him. Then a couple of people from the Pickleball Club went down, talked to him. So I talked to him a couple of times, went to Florida for a few months, got back, went down and talked. I talked to Jeremiah a number of times and, and most of the, most of you here too. So, uh, Riverside would have been a nice place, but I understand the issues there. Heritage will be a fantastic place. You're not gonna get any complaints. The pickleball community will absolutely love Heritage Park. There's plenty of room and of course, it's by far the cheapest place, I, I mean, the least expensive place to put it in. It's all you get is move the, the dirt and the sand and put the asphalt in, the fences, and it's, it's ready to go. You've got parking right there.
No.
No. Uh, it, it would just, it'll be a great place. The whole, the pickleball community will love it. A friend of mine lives on Vine Street. Yeah, he wouldn't have minded going down to the island, I mean, to Riverside or, you know, or uh, West Park. But he's extremely happy, be happy to go out to Heritage shorter than going out to the Y like we did today to play. So uh, Heritage would be a really, really great location. And then in a couple of years, I'll be back and we can talk about putting some more course in after the first six. Any, any questions? Okay, Jeremiah, thanks for, you know, it's, we're, we're really excited about, the pickleball community is really excited about the opportunity of course over at Heritage Park.
Okay, well, unless there's any uh, concerns about that, Commissioner, what I'd like Jeremiah to do is go ahead and get some pricing for the work at Heritage and hopefully we could bring that resolution back out for the first day of August. Thanks, Jeremiah. All right, we're done. Uh, I will turn back to you, Mayor, for any other items of public comment.
All right, are there any other items? I'm starting to feel like we're gonna have a lot of public comment, but let's move on to that. All right. We're going to move on to public comment. We're going to begin inside the room first and then we'll go to Zoom. As I um, expect there to be some public comments tonight. Just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit. You will hear the alarm go off that our city clerk will have going with the three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. So we'll begin inside the chamber first.
Some things all that are left open ended. Um, I, it is my hope that you will not roll this out until you have funding available for those people. You can save money on the table all you want, but what about those sellers that have to bring money just to close? They reduce the price and the buyers have to fix it. Where did they get that extra money? I mean, they, it's not in their loan, so, so, you, you know, the buyers that are buying these houses in the lower end price range do not have that extra money. They have worked and saved for years just to come up with five thousand dollars for a down payment closing cost. You're gonna roll this out in February and it's winter and you're gonna hit these homeowners. They're gonna be blindsided just like they were when their trash receptacles showed up in their driveway. Even though you've been talking about it, half of the residents did not know. And that's going to be the same with this. They're gonna have to scrape and paint. How do you get that done in February and March? You're gonna escrow for it and this is conditional approval, but there's nothing in here that says, how do you, where do you come up with those amounts? The buyer says, hey, I, I'm fine doing it. I can do it. How do you set an escrow amount? How do you know what that's going to cost? You know, is there, is there a set limit? Just the cost of what it's, what the repair is going to be? Or is it one and a half times? Is it, i- i- you know, how long are you gonna give them? You know, you're, you're gonna have to give them several months to do it and allow for weather. How many extensions are granted? Is it gonna cost more? I think there was something in here that said something about it not being compliant in a certain time. There's, there's still just a lot of things here to think about. I, I think, you know, we were under the impression that the, you were implementing the ordinances that we have right now, things were getting better. So why, what's the rush? Why, why are we pushing this now instead of letting those, you know, catch up? And work this out a little bit better?
I'm Mary Anne Climen, um, three three eighty West Circle Drive. Or the hills. Um, I had specifically sent some questions to this lab, um, asking for specifics. Number one, we still haven't heard from anyone how much this is gonna cost our sellers. Have this inspection done before they list or have some type of those. So I would be interested in knowing that. Also, I know personally, and I think many here in this row know that the inspection inspector or the inspector for rentals is way far behind. And not, I don't feel doing a proper job with what I've seen, what I've listed and what I've shown. It leaves a lot to be desired as far as whether things are getting taken care of. I know one specifically that I asked for an inspection because it was supposed to be done during COVID, wasn't done. We wanted to get an inspection, enough of a data inspection for the buyer. And we were just told, don't be around the jacket for twenty twenty-two. Wouldn't even come out. So are we gonna have that kind of issue when we're trying to list homes for our sellers? And also, how long are you gonna do the closing extensions? Because like she said, if we're, you know, if we're closing in December and you can't even get a contractor, let alone repaint something yourself until April or May, then, you know, that's gonna cause a lot more issues. And is this gonna affect foreclosures? Um, you know, like, sorry, but is Old National gonna have to take care of whatever you foreclose on? In order to get a deal done, how about the city of Adrian when you get it back in bad taxes? Are you gonna make all those repairs before you sell it? And you know, I just think that if we have the funds to assist people in our community, and it sounds like we do, sounds like we have a net profit, that I would rather see it going towards that, honestly. It'd be more immediate, like you said, if we could just look at a more immediate fix. What, what you guys are talking about doing, honestly, I've never run a city, but I run my home. And I'm not gonna wait until my kid moves to go to college to clean that room. You know what I mean? So a lot of people are gonna stay where they're at.
Hi, Janice Montalvo. I am not wearing my Realtor hat tonight, although I do have an opinion which I would love to share. Um, I actually come on behalf of the Greater Illinois Chamber of Commerce. Um, we met last Friday. I, I guess, sitting on the board, I was not aware of exactly where that situation was. I have watched the entire May sixteenth meeting and also your July eighth meeting, I believe. And, and I come to you today as an apology, as a board member for the chamber, as a, a person who works every day in the city of Adrian as well. We, we, we dropped the ball. I mean, we, we need to resolve this situation. We need to work better with the city of Adrian. You are our member and we are here as a chamber to serve our entire community and, and we are here to serve the city of Adrian. So I come to you today as a plea. I think you got, got a nice plea email from NISTI. But our board is now aware of the situation and we wanna sit down and figure out how we resolve this. I, I personally think that this Greater Illinois Chamber will be really good for both of our communities. We've done a great job at, I, I always say, as we're trying to bring the trail into Tecumseh, we've done a great job of trying to blur the line to eliminate, this is Adrian and this is Tecumseh. I'm an Adrian graduate with two Tecumseh high school graduates. So there's a blurred line in my house. Uh, unless you're a Michigan State or Michi- or unless you're a Michigan fan, there's still a blur there. Um, but, but truly, we, we, we are humbled. We realize that we screwed up. We, we continue today as a plea to sit down with us to figure out how we work this out, how we include and make all of our members happy and specifically at this point, the city of Adrian for the Greater Illinois Chamber of Commerce. I still have time left. I can talk about the real estate. I will say, we do have some issues with rental. I have had two investors who, um, are those people who sold their rentals? If we're doing rentals inspections, there is no way. I mean, truly, some of the houses that I sold, I would not say, um, if they had a rental inspection, I, I, and they were all approved before we sold them, they were not up to par inside or outside. And luckily, I'm not gonna say he, you, you know, my client was a slumlord, but luckily, my client is no longer um, doing rentals. But truly, we have some opportunity if we're, we need to back up and take care of the rentals in our lower income before we take on. We, we may be in a market that's a little expanded or a little bit on the high end. I don't know about anybody else, but I cannot believe what these houses are selling for in the entire county. And, and this too will pass. We're a cyclical market and what does happen when this market, when these values go down? And what happens to our, our landowners? I feel like.
Big name, I'll give that to you because we, his chair returned so I can.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So now I have the timer. Thank you. There you go. Thank you for your time.
I'm Bill Chesser, uh, with the Greater Illinois County, or County Chamber. I just wanna echo Janice said. It wasn't until July thirteenth that we were made aware of, of those two meetings that she referenced, uh, May and July as a board. And we, I think all the board members watched those videos. We had a meeting the very next day. There was a special meeting called just to address that. I'm a businessman in this, in this city and in some other cities. And I wouldn't think of ever treating a client the way that we have treated you. We didn't listen to what we were being told. And both those meetings, I, I'm, I'm listening, I'm hearing the frustration in this group. Uh, maybe feeling overlooked, maybe not cared about. And, and we did not address that and we should have. In my line of, of business, I believe the only way that we do business is have strong relationships. I think our board also recognizes that. Business is not numbers. This is not accounting sheets, it's not spreadsheets. I'm an attorney by trade. As far as my, my training, I don't act as an attorney anymore, although I keep my license. I have an undergrad in business and I can tell you one thing, one thing. One thing they didn't teach me in business school or even all this, because I took a law school. So that business is about maintaining great relationships. And you maintain great relationships by listening with your ears and dealing with your heart, but the person across the table is saying, saying to you. And you have my commitment that I heard you. And you have the commitment of our board that we heard you. And there will be some changes that will be made and we'll be swift to hear and respond to the frustrations that we heard. And I apologize on behalf of the Chamber, we're not hearing them earlier. You have our attention now. And so I ask that you consider postponing the past any resolution 220557 and give us a couple more months to show you how quickly we're going to make some changes for you. All we need to do is, is start addressing the things and honestly, we already heard some of them in those meetings. So we can begin to, we're going to begin to attack them before we have to sit down with you because we heard them. So that is my commitment, that's the board's commitment. And, and I hope that you'll consider, I know it's a bold ask, because I can, I can sense the frustration in this room. But I'm asking this boldly because I believe we're going to make changes that you need. And in the end, we're going to serve you much better. So I don't think we've been treating you like a, like a client. I think we've been treating you like a commodity partner. We just want to tell you, tell you about how, what we want to do and not listen to what you want to do. You have our apology and you have my commitment and that's where the entire board's been, to invest in, in, in serving this, this city immediately.
I'm sorry, I just was going to jump in right. Um, so my name is Misty Shulters and I serve as a vice chair for the Greater Lenaway Chamber of Commerce. Um, so just echoing what Bill and Janice said, we are humbly asking for that opportunity to demonstrate how important the relationship with the city of Adrian is to the chamber. We started this merger process in 2021. We recognized that we had two different personalities, if you will, that we were blending together. But it was paramount to all of our board members to ensure that your vacation was the message that was received when we did the merger. Um, we serve many businesses that have customers in both Adrian and Tecumseh areas. And in addition, several, several of our current members have multiple locations throughout both of those communities. So again, it was important for us for them to feel that blended unification. We wanted to assure longstanding and future members that they would have continued opportunities for the businesses to thrive within Lenaway County. It wasn't just about one location over another, it was about Lenaway County, all this best for all of us that reside here. Uh, there were several opportunities for members to provide feedback in the merger process. We had member-based focus groups. Um, and we also had several surveys that went out asking about what is important in the chamber? What, what about location? How do you want to be communicated to? Were you interested in our business education workshops or the community events? What really helped drive your business goals? And so all of that information we took in and we worked on making sure that the new Greater Lenaway Chamber of Commerce represented the members' needs and wants and desires. So again, as a reminder, the Greater Lenaway Chamber of Commerce is here for Lenaway businesses and Lenaway businesses alone. We do not see village or city or township lines. We see the great benefit that the Lenaway business community stands to gain by the collective efforts of all of us that are involved. And we humbly ask if you reconsider resolution R22-057 as we are here to serve the business community in Lenaway and that includes the city.
Richard Abol, live on Front Street. I just want to echo probably in terms of the young lady in the orange coat there, that with contractors not being timely right now, I think it's going to create perhaps a problem. Selling houses, it might delay the sale, right? Things are very volatile right now with both the interest rate and availability of, of homes. And that's going to cost, it'll cost somebody money, not just the cost of having this inspection and the cost, right? It's going to cost money, real dollars, not an opinion about thinking about this. It's going to be general or whatever. It's going to cost somebody money, right? It's going to cause a delay. You know that to be true, not an opinion, not I'm thinking something, it's what's happening right now. The other thing is she, this young lady brought up about the, uh, why not just enforce it right now with all the, all the home? He said, well, it's going to cause a burden. You said you didn't care. You can't afford to do it, you shouldn't own a house. Which is it? You don't want to cause a burden or you don't care? Which one is it? My other thought is with, you know, you're involved in something, I'm a smart guy. There's not only one way to solve a problem. Anybody can find evidence to support their claim. What about cities that don't do this? Are you saying that all cities that don't do this, they're, they're not ever renovated? They all go to hell? Are there other ways successfully to do what you're saying this is going to do? Is it? There's not just one way to solve a problem. And I'd like to make a decision based on all the information, not just somebody that's going to support what you're saying. That's all.
Thank you for calling me.
Hi, William Sutter, Tecumseh. I work for Old National Bank as a mortgage lender. So I can kind of hear what was going on a little bit about this. Um, the only thing that I really see with it is that it's really meant to maybe catch your cash sales because from the mortgage financing standpoint, all homes have to be safe and all homes have to be in good order for any investor to purchase it, uh, the mortgage loan. Like, we don't write hard money for loans. We have investors that purchase our mortgages that we underwrite for their guidelines. Now, coming to Adrian specifically, I'm a high value lender. I underwrite, I, I make a lot of loans to a lot of the people in the city of Adrian. Um, a lot of them are state down payment assistance thousand loans. Because as somebody mentioned, they, it's almost impossible to save for a down payment right now. That program specifically will not allow for an escrow payment. It has to be done before closing, before they're eligible for the state funds. So my concern is that it's going to start burdening those who want to be a homeowner. Those people are wanting to buy in the areas of Adrian that we consider blighted. That it's going to edge them out of even being able to buy their home now if this is enforced, um, unless the seller can handle it. Uh, because the buyer won't be able to and the mortgage can't help you either. It's, it's literally going to be the burden of the seller, which I think is what you're hoping for. But it's going to create a little bit more burden than that. And it's not as easy as, oh, well then escrow it. Well, with that buyer, we can't. Um, and you may, Freddie Mac, FHA, all of them really aren't allowing escrow for any type of repair anymore. So it really does have to be done prior to close. Um, so I know some back and forth, this thing said, well, when there's a seller involved and a buyer involved, the buyer can maybe help. Well, not necessarily. It's really going to still become the seller's issue to get this done. You might get lucky and have a buyer who has the ability to help, yes. But it's, in my experience, it's rare. It really is. Uh, and again, you can't inflate a loan to recover or to cover any repairs on the buyer's end. Uh, escrows are one and a half times, no matter what, if you can even get an escrow. So there, there's, I'm scared that it's going to kill financing deals. And, you know, now you've made it hard for buyers who already are having a tough enough time even getting accepted off around a house right now to even go through with buying it and getting it successfully to the closing table. Those are my thoughts.
Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. You also have a three-minute time limit. You will hear the timer and for the record, please station your address.
Ken Tokar.
Ken Tokar, 110 South.
I just wanted to get some observations on the point of ordinance. I've been here in, in Adrian since 2006. I lived in Ypsilanti and Redford Township prior to that. Never had to call about anything in Redford Township. Made a couple of calls in Ypsilanti and they were addressed immediately. I've been making complaints about certain houses since 2006, when you guys had CCL fixed. Nothing ever happened with that. So I guess I want to see something done with blight, but I've already waited 16 years and now you're going to create a point of sale ordinance that still makes me wait longer until a house is sold before you do something that you should have been doing 16 years ago. Another observation, last week we heard Chief Massengill, we've seen Chief Emrick, we've seen Mr. Tomajewski come up and speak in front of the Adrian City Commission. Where's Glenn Preston in this whole thing? Why don't we hear him about what's going on with these inspections? Pettiness. We've seen pettiness at the county level. I'm just concerned about pettiness that could subsequently happen when someone's doing one of these inspections. It happened at the county level, so why, what's to say it can't happen at that level? You guys are patting yourselves on the back and you're telling yourselves that you're going to get rid of blight in three years. You're only going to get rid of blight if a house is for sale. Now, you're saying you can do this with this program or formula that you're using. It's going to help. Why don't you adopt that formula to the pension deficit? Why don't we fix the roads in Adrian? You guys don't fix the roads in Adrian because you don't have the money, but then you're going to create an ordinance that puts a burden on a homeowner when you can't do the same thing that you're asking other people to do. I don't think you should approve this ordinance.
Hello, Ken Ramos here. Um, hopefully you can hear and see me. Might be having some technical issues, but I just want to say that, um, I also have some concern with way to see and those certain things like still waiting for signs, still waiting for more lights, still waiting for roads to be repaired. Um, I have more to say in the normal meeting, but I have some concerns there.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a, or a learning of comments before we? May I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we will begin our regular meeting out in the city chambers at seven, yeah. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for July 18th, 2022. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Castleberry. Commissioner Goss is absent.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Gordon Goss from tonight's meeting?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes, and thank you for not coming.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes, Mayor Heath.
Yes, even though you're the reason I have to wear this mask now, thanks. No, I'm just kidding, yes.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Goss is approved by a six, zero vote.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move adopt the consent agenda.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yeah.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by a six, yes, zero, no vote.
Moving on to the regular agenda, we have one resolution. It is resolution R22-057 from the city commission. It is a resolution to resign from membership in the Greater Lenaway Chamber of Commerce. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Ken Tokar, 110 South Locust.
Go ahead.
Ken Tokar, 110 South Locust. I'm in support of this because the Adrian City Commission is finally holding someone accountable for their actions. The city of Adrian has stor, has historically not held people accountable. And I'm, as an example, I'm going to say the people who put trash on their front lawn, the Adrian doesn't hold them accountable. So I think this is a good start. You do not hold people accountable for maintaining the exterior of their house. That is why I support this, because now you are going to be holding people accountable. You do not hold people accountable for not having handrails on their house. This is a step in the direction of equality. So I support the city of Adrian doing this. The city of Adrian does not hold people accountable for bringing their trash cans and putting them behind their house. This is a step towards holding people accountable, so I'm hoping that you do this. The city of Adrian does not hold people accountable for using calendars. This is a step towards, and I'm hoping that the city will. Including the correct meeting minutes for special meetings that are omitted. This is a step for holding people accountable.
You need to stay, you need to stay on the topic of the resolution. You can give this public comment later in our regular public comment.
It's about holding people accountable and I'm glad that you guys are holding them accountable, just like you should be holding other people accountable for other things that they're not doing. I would ask that you include a monetary $1 deductible instead of taking away all of their funding to show that you have a goodness in your hearts.
He's muted now. You may begin.
My name is Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. I'll wait, Robin starts here. So I'm here tonight to support the Greater Lenaway Chamber of Commerce to voice my opposition to your resolution, resigning from the chamber. You state that the chamber, by moving its offices to another community, has lost focus on its Adrian members and thus, in your words, quote, "leaving the city without adequate support," end quote. I question how you come up with that analysis and today's business climate, how does the office location really, is, that's not a major determinant, hopefully, of your decision. We can work from anywhere these days. Have you asked local businesses in the community, community to determine their opinion on this merger? I don't hear a groundswell of support for your position. My wife and I are members of the chamber. None of you asked me what I thought and I see all of you all the time. I understand you had some concerns with the chamber. These are legitimate concerns and I appreciate that. And I was present here when Matt Swartshunder made a presentation to you last and it was probably a less than great experience for all of you, including Matt. Um, but I think he attempted to tell you what the chamber was going to do to make businesses in Adrian being felt that they were going to be supportive. And maybe he didn't do that to your satisfaction, but I think he certainly meant to do it. Currently, 66% of the chamber members live in the, are in the ZIP code 49221. Many of those businesses pay taxes to the city of Adrian. Many of those people live here. To overlook this large percentage of members, I think is a mistake on your part. If you have concerns with the chamber, and I know you do, then address them and work to solve the issue or issues. You heard from board members, I think they opened the door for you. You heard from board members, I think they opened the door for you to let that happen. We need to cooperate in this county, and you're not showing leadership as the leaders of the county seat if you don't step back and reevaluate this, this, this move. So many of us have committed time, energy, and financial resources to help move the city and the county forward. I strongly believe the chamber is an important and essential partner in this effort. We have to all work together, and when we do, as my friend Joe Williams always says, we all win. I encourage you to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Hello, Ken Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter Street. I'm not going to mess with my video this moment. You can all hear me wonderful. So, of course, a lot of issues have been brought up about it, and I think very validly, so. We do have, as Don pointed out, a few members of the com- Chamber of Commerce that have come saying that they are sorry and they will offer a new commitment. So maybe this is a time to give them a final chance and see if they really are going to stay true to this commitment, and maybe just tabling the motion for a meeting or two. I know I've definitely been disappointed in what I've heard about the Chamber of Commerce, but it might be worth giving another chance. That's all I have for now.
Drake Lally here. This, I live at twenty-two sixty-six Sharp Road in Adrian. I've seen the chamber situation from both sides because I'm active in the chamber. And as you all know, I'm also on the DDA for the city of Adrian. In this case, I would encourage you, since the olive branch has been extended, to give it another couple months. See what the chamber can do, and I think each side, if we are clear about our expectations, I think that we have some deliverables that can be expected at the end of those two months that are pretty easy to define. So it should be a pretty easy process to see if, at that point, it would make sense to move forward in partnership or not. So just my two cents. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Castleberry?
I, I, we talk a lot about how important community is, and I want to say that I appreciate the chamber board members coming to speak at the meeting today. I am certified in restorative practices, and I think that building community means we restore relationships, and so I appreciate you coming to have a conversation with us today. Having these meetings, we have to have meetings in public. It's the Open Meetings Act, right? That's how we have these conversations, so we have to have them sitting at the table as we have done so. So I really appreciate you coming to have a conversation with us today and talking to us about this. And the reason why we, we have had these meetings is because we are not pleased with what was happening, and I am hopeful that we can make some positive change in the future.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes, I came, walked through the door today with the idea of voting in favor of breaking our relationship with the, with the chamber. I was under the impression that they were maybe working with a business model that was somewhat antiquated because we didn't feel like we were getting any benefit from it. But I've known Janice Montalvo for a long time. I know she's sincere and passionate when she talks. The other two board members that were with her did equally as good a job. And had no one showing up from the chamber tonight, it would have been very easy to vote yes and let's move on. But because you came with so much passion, I have to change my, my attitude tonight and just see where we can go with this. So I appreciate you showing up.
Commissioner Roberts.
So just to address a few things that were just said during public comment. Mr. Taylor, you mentioned, you know, with, should address these concerns. We've been addressing these concerns. I have personally met with Mr. Schwartzlander. I know Greg has spoken with him, and I know Mr. Marcus has. We, we, we had him at our meeting. We have addressed our concerns, and they were not listened to. Having clear expectations, in my point of view, I thought I had, was pretty clear on what my expectation was for the relationship with the city. Maybe I wasn't, but I believe that we were. They were not listened to. We are looking out for the city of Adrian chamber relationship, not necessarily for all city of Adrian businesses. So what benefit has the chamber been to the city of Adrian? Why would I want to spend my tax dollars, we're living here for thirty-some years, to something that is not giving me a benefit as a city resident? I have to weigh that versus breaking from the chamber would, is something I never, ever contemplated. I, I, I don't want to do that, but, but the only way it seemed that we get anyone's attention is by saying, by putting this on the agenda and by saying we're going to do it. And that's really unfortunate because these conversations have been happening for months now. And it wasn't until we said, still not getting what, all we're asking is for what other businesses and organizations have gotten. Nothing more. We don't expect anything other than what everyone else is getting. If we have an event, put it on your website, put it on your Facebook. That's all we're asking. It's not a big ask, and I think if you listen to our meetings from before, you heard us. That is what we asked. We're not asking for special marketing or special promotions or any of that. Just do for the city of Adrian events what you're doing for other community events and other business events. That's what we want. That's what we expect, and those things were said, and they weren't listened to.
Commissioner Hou.
You know, when we met with the chamber at our last meeting, can't remember offhand how long ago it was. I told Mr. Schwarzenegger myself, and, and before I start, I want to appreciate the board members coming tonight. You know, like, like Commissioner Strayer said, I, you know, I, I wish that passion was brought in the past, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think, you know, if this was to go through, I don't think it's necessarily a, a, for everything. But I will tell you this, from a business standpoint, the chamber, my personal business, did nothing for me, and so I canceled it. I treat that in my own livelihood as I do with, with, with taxpayer dollars. And, and it, the fee was, I bought it, it was like three hundred and fifty dollars a year or something like that. But I got nothing out of it, and I don't have any interest on cutting checks to, to, to burn it in the trash and get an overturn out of it. You know, Commissioner Roberts made a point of, you know, this is not, this has nothing to do with individual businesses that reside in the city, city of Adrian. It has to do with the city of Adrian's relationship with the chamber. Now, of, you know, what sense of it is us to sit up here in a dais and, and, and to disagree with the CEO of the city, Greg Elliott, or our main street director, when they have constantly said that there's obstacles and hurdles when it comes to getting them to do anything for us? We have a marketing director, she's sitting right over there. I mean, so she can share stuff on Facebook, you know, and she does. So what are we getting out of it? This is more of a, this is frustrating to me is because, you know, you know, the chamber does, you know, you know, they do some good, just in this situation, they're not doing good for the city of Adrian. And, and if it was, if I was the king of Adrian last meeting, I would have pulled the plug last meeting. But in closing with this is that it's my job always, and I've always said this, now, you know, I'll say it till I'll, till I'm off the commission, is that I will always treat taxpayer dollars like I treat my own. And if I'm not getting nothing in return, I don't care if it's five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, I am not going to support that. Not saying that my position won't change in the future, if, if we have consensus on this board to say that we can go out and, and, and rebuild that relationship up if it was to pass tonight. But right now, you know, you know, my conscience has always been that I treat this like I would if it's mine and mine only. And, and, and right now, I don't think that we're getting the return or bang for our buck as we should be. Again, I thank you guys for coming, you know, for me personally, because you guys really did a really good job of presenting and the commitment and the passion like Commissioner Shayer said, but you know, I wish that was last meeting. I mean, because I truly believe that there would have been some positive change, so.
Um, I came into this meeting very strongly, thinking that I would vote yes on it because my frustration level has been extremely high as well. I sit in countless meetings with both our main street director and our city administrator, and I hear the frustrations. I, I see the frustrations. I have met with Matt Schwarzenegger several times myself, and we just did not see any progress, and, and we put it out there, and we had these meetings, and we just did not see anything progressing even after, and there, there wasn't even an admittance of, there was tonight. It feels a little too late, but I am also that person that is willing to, I, I, me personally, I feel that we should give it a few more months now. Now I have changed my tune as of tonight by hearing the passionate pleas during the pre-meeting, but, but it's not going to be forever. And I, and I'm one of those people that crossed me once, I'll forgive you, we move on, cross me twice, well, then you're going to be done. I'm not going to vote yes, I'm not going to give you more time because I feel very passionately that the city has just really had a disservice by, by the, the treatment and just the way that, that is, it has gone down with the chamber, and I feel that this can be rectified, and, and I, I love the way that one of our, one of our business owners, Drake Lally, just said, you know, that the olive branch was extended tonight, and, and I do feel that way, and I definitely would like to see, let's see, let's see where this can go. Let's, let's try to mend this relationship. Let's, let's give it a little more time. Let's just see what can happen. But it doesn't mean that now we can just hear this and move on and nothing happens again because that's what's happening. It has been going on for months in, in these conversations, but maybe we just weren't having the conversations with the right people, and we heard some, some different voices tonight than we've heard before. And, you know, the sadness that I feel, though, is that, just like Commissioner Roberts said, that it took it being on the agenda, it was out there that this was happening to catch the attention, and, and that's, that's sad to me that it, that it took that, but I just feel that communication really needs to be improved and that, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can move on from here, and if it's not, if it's not passed tonight, and even if it is, it doesn't mean, just like Commissioner Hou said, that we don't revisit it, and that's what I was originally coming to say tonight, is that I was going to vote in favor of this resolution, saying it doesn't mean it's permanent. We can revisit this. Let's see if the things, like, there's some conversations that can happen and, and some avenues that can be reached between the, the, the two parties, and maybe we can, you know, revisit it. But at this point, after hearing tonight, I, I would like to give it a little bit more time, and let's see if we can make this relationship better. I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
No.
Commissioner Strayer.
No.
Commissioner Castleberry.
No.
Mayor Heath.
No.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
No.
Resolution, resolution failed by a one yes, five no vote.
Commissioners, you have miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments about those reports? Moving on, it is now time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin first inside the city chambers. After we have heard all public comment inside the city chambers, we will open it up at that time to Zoom participants.
Janice Montalvo, sixty-one fifty-two Bell Rod Court. First of all, I want to begin by saying thank you. Secondly, Commissioner Hou, we need to show you what the benefit of the chamber is. It's like anything else. If you belong to the Kiwanis and you don't participate, you get nothing out of it. I have the privilege of leading or be the co-facilitator, facilitator for Leadership Lenawey. We just graduated twenty-two people and celebrated at Mammoth the other, last week. So we will take this advantage to sit down with you, to talk about what our relationship is, to build that back up, both with Jay and with Greg, and to talk about what your membership should be bringing you. It's not about a darn Facebook page. It's not about that. It's not about whether our, when, one community has a better farmer's market. It's about how we build up our county and our cities, and we continue to move forward. So I thank you for that opportunity. I thank you for not voting to pass this resolution, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Bill Chesser, six Burnwick Drive, Adrian, Michigan. I just want to extend a sincere thank you to this commission that you have ears to hear what we want to change. I appreciate that hearts change today, and hearts don't change unless you begin to start connecting with the people that are in front of you. And I appreciate that you allowed us the opportunity to connect with you today. I am very sorry. I'm very sorry that we, we, we had opportunities before. But I can only tell you, I watched the videos on the thirteenth of this month. And, and from here on, it's now on my head and on my back to make sure it gets done and that we serve this, this city better. And, and I think all the rest of our board has to own that, and they do own it. So I just am so appreciative for this opportunity. Thank you all for, for listening to us and for giving us a, an extension. And I hope, I hope we show you that, that every, every dollar spent comes back in a multiple. Thank you so much.
Hello, Misty Shulters, forty-four eighty-six McKenna Drive. Like my colleague said, thank you so much for this opportunity to show you what a relationship with the chamber, between the chamber and the city of Adrian can be, right? It's not about all of the other businesses, however, that, you know, that's what builds a thriving community for us, and so we're excited for that opportunity, and thank you again for hearing us out today.
Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. Two things. Thank you for, thank you for listening to them and to, they're much more eloquent than I was, but I feel passionate about it. Understand your, your concerns. I mean, I heard a lot of the stories, and I think they heard you. I think you heard them, and so thank you for that, that process. I want to also, on behalf of my, the Housing Lenawey team, One Lenawey and Lenawey Community Foundation, thank you very much for approving the expenditure from the city to support our housing strategic plan. We're going to work very, very hard to make all of that come forth and be a benefit. I know it'll be a benefit to the city and to the whole county, so thank you very much.
At this time, we will now open up public comment to the Zoom participants. For the record, please state your name and address, and you will see your time on your, on the screen.
Ten Tokars, one ten South Locust. I guess I'm hoping that the Adrian City Commission can have some empathy for me when I speak out about how precincts one and two do not get the same respect as the other precincts or the west side of Adrian. On another note, there are some documents, right, going about the community in regards to the Phoenix project. I'm sure that all of you have seen them by now.
I want to remind the Adrian City Commission that you guys are also the county seat. And with being the county seat, I'm asking the Adrian City Commission to hold an impartial special meeting and invite all of the other communities, Blissfield, Morenci, Clinton, Sand Creek. Invite the membership of those, those communities to come to Adrian. Just have a special meeting to just talk and hear the public and what their comments are specific to the Phoenix project and what's going on at the county level. We had a six-three vote going one way, which it's scary that that happened. And it's even scarier with the documents that all of you have seen by now. So once again, I'm asking the Adrian City Commission and also the city of Adrian, who is the county seat for Lenawee to step up and hold a special meeting just to hear the concerns of Blissfield, Morenci, Clinton, right, Sand Creek. Thank you.
Hello, Joaquin Ramos, 422 South Winter Street. First off, the cook-off happened, many of you were there and it was great to see you there. Of course, we did have a winner who was sitting with you. Love the desserts and also thank you very much to those of you that did make it out there. Of course, despite that this is great and that I'm very appreciative. I also do still have to point out that there are lighting issues and would really like some more lights over in both of those parks and both Parish Park and Dunlap Park and the area surrounding them. We've had issues with the lighting for a very long time now. We even, a while back, some of you were a part of it, sat down with the police chief and some other organizations and talked about the lighting issue. So I hope that this is getting closer to being addressed. And that's all I have for now.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? I would just like to let everyone know so that the public also is aware if you see them out and about. But our sister city is sending five delegates from Moriyama, Japan. They will be arriving Monday morning, this coming Monday, July 25th. And they will be here until Thursday evening, July 28th. So you may see them out and about on a tour, walking through downtown. Wherever it may be, they're going to be eating at several establishments. One of the days they're staying with their host families is just a host family day. So you may see them around town with their host family. So just, you know, make sure and introduce yourself if you see them around. There are five delegates coming from our sister city. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and we're very excited about this and cannot thank these host families enough and all the hard work that they are putting in as well and the time they are giving up to make them feel welcome in addition to so many of the businesses that have been so gracious to either donate or are giving a tour of their facility or whatever it may be. Taking all of my harassing phone calls, no, I'm just kidding. They have been very gracious with filling the time and making it a very meaningful trip for all of our sister city delegates that are coming. So thank you very much. I also would just like to publicly thank our Parks and Rec Director, Jeremiah Davies. I have really noticed a change. Wow, what a difference it has having a Parks and Rec Director that's just dedicated to that. I just told him the other day when I ran into him in City Hall that the benches are painted, they look great, the flowers have never looked better. Things are, things are changing in our parks. Are there still improvements to be done? Yes, there are still improvements that need to be done. But, you know, he's really trying to address those concerns. One of those concerns I know that he's looking at is the lighting in some of these parks, just as Joaquin Ramos just brought up. I know that that is something that he is out looking at and trying to even go out at night. I have gotten several other concerns about another park as well. And so I just thank him for his dedication and, and how much he's doing for the city and the beautification. And it's just, the parks are looking a lot better. They were in big disarray a year ago right now and the change has been phenomenal. So thank you very much to our Parks and Rec Director, Jeremiah Davies. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Halt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.